For the benefit of you folks in the audience, for the benefit of you, we will be starting the city council meeting in five minutes at 6:05. Thank you.
I've already had one of them once. I need to take out some of Diana's.
I sent him one.
He asked me to look it up before he said, unfortunately, they have all the others. Yes, it was spot. Do we care about shots or shots? Perfect.
I know.
No, I'm going back there. Quick.
Straight from Castle Creek type come here.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Still, is she still powering them?
There's no exact mile rate. No exact mile? There is exact mile? Oh, okay.
That's great. That says a lot.
Uh, thank you. I'm fine with anything.
Huh?
I'm fine with anything.
I know.
It's been awful all week. Yeah, the hotel that we were at. Where'd you say? It's up in the Dells. Stiff glass we tried to crack my back in the car. Shoulder. Pulled my shoulder.
Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, October 23rd, 2017. We're just getting started about five minutes late tonight because of an executive session, and I appreciate the patience of those here in the audience, of those who have been waiting at home. Our clerk tonight is Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, and I'd like Ruth to call the roll, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Norrico?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Eight present?
I'd like to have Police Detective Aaron Lockhart, please, to come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Aaron?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now will approve tonight's agenda. If you have not picked up a copy of the agenda, I believe there are still some additional copies in the back there. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Here.
Eight yes?
Thank you. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's regular session. We'll move on to item E, special items or presentations and citizens' comments. Our first item is special items. Our first item is Proudly DeKalb. We have two that I'd like to mention if I may. One I'd like to congratulate, a couple of organizations very, very close to the city who have received awards this past week. The DeKalb Park District received two awards, two monetary grant awards from Commonwealth Edison, one for powering safe communities, a $6,000 grant which will allow them to do some safety and public address work at the Hopkins Park Pool. They also received a $10,000 grant on the greening of a region, and that is for some of their work on their nature trail. So Proudly DeKalb certainly acknowledges those fine awards and grants for the DeKalb Park District. Also, the DeKalb Public Library this past week received an award from the American Institute of Architects for having the top public architectural award for its facility, our wonderful library down here. And a representative from the association came up from Springfield and made that presentation this past week, and I was proud to be able to make a few comments there on behalf of the city council and the city for the DeKalb Public Library. Moving on, item number B, Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan Task Force update. As you know, we have two city councilmen who are liaison to our revitalization plan, which is underway and underway very well, I think. That's Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Fanouken. Gentlemen?
Actually, I'll just speak tonight, just that we've had our first couple of meetings, and as we reported last time, they went well. Just to report on when the next meetings are, the next community meeting will be on November 1st at 6:00 PM, again at Westminster, and the task force will meet the following Tuesday at 3:30 PM at the DeKalb Community Outreach Building out there in the county complex on North Annie Glidden Road.
Bill, is that first date that you mentioned correct? I thought it was November 2.
I'm sorry, you're right. It is the 2nd. The other dinner is on the 1st. Thank you, Jerry.
Now, you know, this guy has corrected me so many times.
And, you know, I have it right on my calendar.
So he wouldn't screw it up.
And I have it on my calendar, and I still misspoke.
Right. So it's November 2 for the community meeting, and November 7...
So, yes, that's Thursday, the 2nd, for the community meeting.
And then for the task force on the 7th.
On the 7th, which is the 2nd.
I like the way that that has been tweaked a little bit because it will allow our community to have their meeting, perhaps move any suggested substantive changes and substantive ideas to the task force meeting. Thank you. Yes, Alderman Jacobson?
I would just like to add quickly that there is an additional meeting that's on the docket for us that is related to the task force and that is reaching out to the students. I know that was one of the priorities that we set as a council, that we, that Anne Marie did schedule, and has gone to get the outreach, to get out, to get some of the Greek groups, to get some of the student groups, to get some individual students to come and give some of their perspective, which I think is a huge boost for that effort. Also, coming up that same week, if there are students interested at participating, whether you live in the ward or not, you are welcome, you are encouraged to attend. We want you there, we want your perspective, we need your perspective. So I would like to say anyone that is a student that happens to be watching or has a touch on students, whether you're a professor, whether you're involved elsewhere in the community, whether you're a parent with college students in NIU right now, we'd love to have them come out. I'm certain a quick call to the city manager's office to get them signed up to do it, only because we need some counts for food and other things, would be appreciated. So I'm intentionally not giving that date and time. It is coming up the first week in November. If you have someone interested, please reach out to either Economic Development or the city manager's office, who both happens to be the same person at this point for the week, to get that on the agenda. Also, a quick note, that in our first meeting, one of the concerns that was discussed was some lighting issues in the Greek Row neighborhood. We have gone back and trimmed back all the trees already this year, in the last couple of weeks, and we heard that loud and clear, that that was a major concern and something both we could fit into budget quickly and implement quickly, and got on that immediately this year before it turned too cold to do so, and we have completed that project on Greek Row. So action steps, even after our first meeting, we're making some progress. So it's certainly appreciated, and I look forward to see what comes out of the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's very important that we have some real visible signs of progress, and we certainly have had with the lighting, with the tree trimming. I noticed that one of the things they talked about were some crosswalks across Annie Glidden, and I know a new one that went in this week. So thank you, Dave, and thank you, Bill, for your work on this. Okay, moving forward now, we have three special presentations tonight that we're delighted to hear. The first is our esteemed band director, Kirk Lundbeck, who's going to give the annual report for the DeKalb Municipal Band. Hi, Kirk.
Hi, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council for allowing me to speak to you tonight. The DeKalb Municipal Band completed its 163rd consecutive season on August 22nd. We have a total of 47 members in the band that are regular members in the band. We have 43 on our sub-list. The reason for that is because people will call it the last minute, that they're sick or something, so we have to have maybe 13 clarinets on our sub-list and a couple extra tuba players like Craig Woodruff, who's in the room. I think he's known as Tubaboy. But he's on our sub-list, so we have used him in the past. The band has a board of directors. We have six regular members in the board of directors and two ex officio members, both of those are Palmer family members, Gary and Roger. Seventy-five percent of our band comes from the DeKalb Sycamore and NIU area, 25% comes from out of town. We always try to fill positions with people in this community first. That is real important to us. It is the DeKalb Municipal Band, so we want to feature DeKalb players. We had 11 concerts this year at the band shell, none of which were rained out and neither were the rehearsals, which is two years in a row, and we call that the power of Palmer. We also had one extra concert at the Elwood House, which was kind of tricky this year due to the situation with the grass over there. We had to come up, they actually called me and wanted to cancel the concert, and I said, "No, we're not going to do that. We're going to find an alternative site." And so we met a couple of weeks prior to the Ice Cream Social and found a different location, and it actually worked out a little better, and the audience seemed to enjoy it, the band certainly did, and it was easier to load the stuff in and load the stuff out, so it worked out really well. At our 4th of July concert, we had approximately, well, over 11,000-plus in the park for that night, according to the DeKalb Park District, and I'd like to thank the city of DeKalb and the police force for how easy it was to get in and out of the park that night, especially getting out when you have that many people and you can get out at a reasonable amount of time. It was all due to the police department, so I appreciate that. We had 12 featured vocalists this year, two new ones that had never been here before. We also had seven featured instrumentalists this year. We actually performed 221 different pieces of music in our 12 concerts. That does not include that we do the Star Spangled Banner after every concert, and I once asked Mr. Palmer, when he was still alive, back when I was 17-years-old, the first time I played in the band, I asked him, "Why, you know, everybody does the Star Spangled Banner first. You know, if you go to a ballgame or a hockey game or whatever, it's always done first." And I asked Dee, "Why do you do the Star Spangled Banner last?" And his answer was so perfect, he said, "Well, that ensures that my band gets a standing ovation every week." So, the neatest thing that happened last year was I did a thing, I got an email in Jan, in early March, from the National Committee of Special Programs, which is a part of the Department of Defense of the United States of America. And the letter said that they were looking for organizations to represent the United States at a special program that they were doing in Normandy, France in June of 2018. And so I did a what-the-heck, like when you buy a lottery ticket, you know you're not going to win, but you do it anyway. Well, that's exactly what I did. They asked for a lot of information. They asked some historical background of the band, which I had, of course. They wanted some videos, they wanted some audios, they wanted some pictures, and I sent all that off in this big stack of materials, and didn't hear anything from a long time. So I just assumed that we were not selected. The selection process is pretty intense, and right before the 4th of July, I received a phone call, and Master Gunnery Sergeant Hurry, Earl Hurry, from the selection committee, chose the DeKalb Municipal Band to represent the United States. We were the only band that was chosen in Illinois, and they start with about 40 or 50, and they weed them down, and we ended up in the top six. The issue is, though, it is not cheap to go to France in June with 50 people and a bunch of equipment. It costs about, approximately about $175,000. Now, we can't raise that in the timeframe that they want their portions of the money in. So I told them straight out that that'd be impossible for us to do for, in 2018. He said, "Well, let's not stop there. We've got, we've got three special programs coming up in the next two years. One is going to be at Pearl Harbor, one is going to be in Washington DC, and one is going to be in Mount Rushmore. You're going to be invited to one of those. So we're still going to represent DeKalb, we're still going to represent the state of Illinois and the United States, but just not in France next year. It's just a little too expensive, and with all the unrest around France at this time, and, you know, it's just not the right timeframe with all the grants either already selected and not coming up till next May for me to get the band to go there." We've done a lot of publicity this year. I do weekly radio interviews on WLBK each week, Tuesday before the concert. I spoke to 10 different civic organizations and also church groups, and even did a few visits to local assisted living places to talk to people and get them to come to the band concerts, which they did. You see the posters out every year, we send them everywhere. We've got a large media presence now through online media. We've got our own Facebook page, which has all kinds of likes and all kinds of updates every week. We have our own webpage, dekalbpublicband.com, it's easy to find and look at. We also do an awful lot of advertising within the band, sending out flyers to, the band members take flyers everywhere, so that everybody gets a chance to know what's going on, and if you missed the DeKalb Municipal Band through the winter months, we have a YouTube channel, and you can go there and watch some of the concerts. We go live every concert. The first, the first piece of every concert, we go live each week. So that was 2017. In 2018, we've got 12 concerts scheduled. We're going to have two new vocalists again this year, adding to our team or our pool of vocalists, always trying to show off new talent in the area. We're going to have 220-plus pieces of music. Four special concerts next year, of course, the 4th of July, and we're going to do our special children's concert, which I started six years ago, which has gone over really big to get the kids involved. We're going to do an American composer's concert. Now, we always do John Philip Sousa, you know, he's an American composer. We always do Carl King, he's an American composer, but we're going to do things like Aaron Copland and George Gershwin, all in one show next summer. And we're also going to do a tribute to Broadway and the movies, so that'll be kind of special. We continue to finish taking all of Dee's manuscript pieces that he wrote for the vocalists and turning them into electronic copies for the band, and we have a separate disk hard drive that we put all those pieces on, so they'll last forever now. We have to do a little tweaks with some of them, especially in Dee's later years, he had a few little chord issues, so we had to fix all those, but every one of them's titled that it was transcribed or composed by Dee Palmer, and then whoever did the editing to it and added to it. So it'll be lasting forever. I continue to apply for grants with the DeKalb County Community Foundation, with the Rilitzer Corporation, with the Mary E. Stevens Trust Fund, and others, Illinois Arts Council to help support the band. So things are on the up and up, and all I can say, this is my sixth year of being the conductor, and I'm so honored to do it. It's a real blessing to me.
Well, we're so fortunate to have the DeKalb Municipal Band and under your leadership, Kirk.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, are there any comments or questions of Kirk? If not, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our second report tonight, a presentation, is from the, or is on the 2017 Corn Fest, and I see we have a row of folks back there, and I'm going to ask Lisa Angel to come forward, and you can bring anybody else up you'd like, Lisa. If not, if you'd give us a short report. Okay.
I'm Lisa Angel, I'm the chairperson of Corn Fest, and I'm here with fellow board members. We just wanted to come on behalf of the board and thank the city and all the street departments, fire, police that have all helped us, again, have a successful 40th anniversary for Corn Fest. This year, we were able to donate $7,500 to our two nonprofits and our one local family. Our recipient family this year was the Atta Shakir family, and our new, two nonprofits were the DeKalb Firefighter Historical Foundation and the DeKalb Police Benevolent and Protection Association. On top of that, we were able to make an additional $2,400 in donations to the following local groups that helped out in different areas of Corn Fest. The DeKalb High School Robotics Team performed a robotic presentation on the community stage. We had the DeKalb High School Marching Band that we had helped out to go to Ireland, so in turn, they came and helped us with all the garbage, which is a fun task to do. The Kishawaki Women's Softball Team actually ran our 50/50 raffle, and we gave them part of our proceeds to buy new uniforms for the team. Every year, we have the Boy Scouts Troop 33, they sell the ice to the vendors, as well as recycle the cans in the soundstage area and keep all the profits to benefit their group. Finally, we'd like to thank our local sponsors and over the 250 volunteers compromised of local residents and NIU students, because without them, as well as the city, we would not be able to run the fest that we do. So we thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate your continued leadership on the DeKalb Corn Fest Committee. You know, we talk about the Municipal Band, a real treasure. Corn Fest, what an event, and I appreciate your help. Now, before we let you go, see if there are any questions or comments. Yes, Alderman Fagan?
Working with you before on the board and everything, I really appreciate how much you do, everyone does, and all the volunteers you get. I notice each year, it seems to be, it seems smoother and smoother and smoother, and I just have to congratulate you folks.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more presentation, a special presentation tonight, and I see Paul Calligan and Don Littlefield in our audience to talk about the Resource and Referral System known as 211. Don Littlefield is the Executive Director of the Kishawaki United Way. Hello, Don.
Hello, Mayor Smith. How are you this evening? Well, thank you as well to the council, to the staff, and to the guests here this evening. It is my honor to talk about 211, a brand-new resource in DeKalb County as of June of this year, and so I have a short slide deck just to talk a little bit about the project and give you a little bit of update of where we are so far. So if I can just nod to Ruth for my, is this a switcheroo here? All right, thank you. So if you are not familiar with the resource 211, it is a free information and referral system that folks can access by calling 211. And United Way is one of the lead conveners of the effort with a number of fiscal partners and other community partners, and what this system does is it enables folks to call 211 for information and referral services across a number of different sectors. As you can see, rent utility assistance, senior services, a whole wide variety of human services. All of the services listed in 211 are free to the community, and anyone can either dial 211 or access 211 through a printed database. So why 211 in DeKalb County? We have been talking about 211 for a number of years at United Way, but really what we've come to understand is 211 is very underrepresented in the state of Illinois, and so we wanted to help close that gap here in DeKalb County. And after Paul Calligan and I, one of our board members, did a roadshow this last year and spoke to a number of civic organizations, we got a nice endorsement from the 911 Board, our DeKalb Township and other partners, we decided that 211, bringing 211 to DeKalb County was a real priority for us, and so we were glad to bring that and to make that service happen. We did so a little bit on the heels of our Fairdale disaster, our tornado disaster, realizing that if we had a system like this in place, we would have a better resource in times of disaster or crisis that could be centralized. It is a 24-hour call center that really responds to many of our human service agencies wanting to get information out about their services to clients and to consumers. The neighboring counties of Lee, Ogal, and Winnebago were already connected, so we felt it was a great resource to continue to connection, connections of this kind in our area, and really, we wanted to coordinate that service delivery piece and the really information that we give to folks about what is available in our community, and so we were pleased, again, to make that happen this last June. How is 211 different from 911? Certainly, 911, excuse me, 911 is really meant for emergencies, and I believe Sergeant Jason Levertan said at one of our community meetings, "If you want to respond or call 911, if you want a response, call 211." So 211 is really meant for resources, information. It is a 24-hour system that folks can call. They will get a live person to speak with, and they will get sort of services that wrap around their current needs. So if someone is in need of a food pantry, they may get asked questions about what other resources might you need and how might we best serve your needs. So clearly, 911 is there for emergencies and personnel response. 211 is really about information. So in December of last year, we pulled together all of our service providers, and United Way will continue to do that, making that database when folks call 211 as robust as we possibly can. We have over 150 agencies now registered in 211, and the folks that do answer that call, the call center's actually located in Bloomington, Illinois, and all of the personnel are trained in suicide prevention, disaster response, and are accredited in information and referral services. So we feel very confident that folks that do call that helpline, 211, get good, solid information and resources. There is a language line, so it can be, services can be translated into over 159 languages, and there's also a chat feature and a searchable web-based database, that 211... questions about what other resources might you need and how might we best serve your needs. So clearly, 911 is there for emergencies and personnel response. 211 is really about information. So in December of last year, we pulled together all of our service providers, and United Way will continue to do that, making that database when folks call 211 as robust as we possibly can. We have over 150 agencies now registered in 211. And the folks that do answer that call, the call center's actually located in Bloomington, Illinois, and all of the personnel are trained in suicide prevention, disaster response, and are accredited in information and referral services. So we feel very confident that folks that do call that helpline, 211, get good, solid information and resources. There is a language line, so it can be, services can be translated into over 159 languages. And there's also a chat feature and a searchable web-based database that 211 can be accessed as well. So again, we can call, a lot of the time, getting 211 to DeKalb County was spent with our telecommunications switches and getting the actual number 211 when folks call it on their cellphone to go to the database system in Bloomington. As I mentioned, there is a searchable database and a chat feature. So we were really proud to launch in June of 17. The very first statistics we got were two weeks out of the project. We had a two-week window of our first quarter reports. We saw 70 phone calls in those two weeks, the first two weeks of our launch. And hot off the press today, I had a list of our second quarter response, and we have close to 160 calls in that next quarter. So we're continuing right now in the phase of getting the public relations piece out. We want everyone to know that they can call 211. We want our friends and neighbors to know that, our agency partners, and just anyone who has an interest in helping folks get services. So what is, one of the nice features about 211, and the reason that we got endorsements from our local youth service providers and other groups that were really interested in delivering service, was 211 does provide us with reporting. And we will get some great statistics as this program continues on the top calls that were answered, what were the responses, that what were people searching for in terms of services in DeKalb County. And importantly, important to funders like United Way and other funders are, what are the needs that are not being met? And how can we, as a community, start to convene resources around those? And so we're really pleased to be able to have those resources. There's also the ability to customize reports from 211. If we wanted a list of all the youth service providers, we could draw that from our 211 database. If we wanted a list of senior service providers and on down the line, counseling centers, et cetera, we have some great data flexibility with getting everything into one system and certainly replicating that year after year so that database is solid and has great information in it. So I do want to thank our fiscal sponsors. We do have funding for a three-year pilot of 211, thanks to Kish Health, now part of Northwestern Medicine, the Community Foundation, First Midwest Bank gave us a lead grant, as did Northern Illinois University's Counseling Department. DeKalb Township has invested, and the DeKalb County Community Mental Health Board and the United Way are partners in the publicity and some of the background efforts in the continuing system of 211. So how can all of you help? Certainly, if there are any nonprofit services or even for-profit businesses that offer free services to clients, please encourage them to register in the 211 database. It's a very easy agency registration form, and it is at the pathcrisis.org website. So just today, I was speaking to a financial counseling entity that will be registering their free services in that database. Spread the word to anyone who might need assistance. We do have a stash of 211 business cards. We've got some door hangers. We've got some magnets that we'll be at community events handing out. So if anyone has a group or anyone that wants to disseminate some information to them, please let me know as well. And we do have a group of 211 champions that are made up of a lot of our youth service providers and other human service providers. And so we meet on a regular basis, really talking about how we might perpetuate this resource and make it the most vibrant we can for DeKalb County. And so with that, I thank you for your attention tonight, and just wanted to make sure that you are aware of this great resource and helping us to perpetuate it in the ways that you were able to do that.
Yeah, it seems to be a great new community resource, you know, and throughout the state. Any questions or comments? If not, thank you, Don. Appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Okay, moving forward, item number three under special items, approval of mayor's appointments. I have none tonight. We only have two vacancies in our 14 boards and commissions. I do have a finance advisory committee appointment that I need to make. I have already had a few volunteers come forward with a potential interest. And also, we have an opening on the police pension board. Before we move on to public participation, I'd like to call attention to the fact that we have two new folks representing our Cora folks over here. Our city manager Ruth, Anne Marie Gora, and our police chief, Jean Lowry, are at a city and county management conference, a national conference this week. So sitting in for Anne Marie is acting city manager, Joellen Charlton. And sitting in for Jean Lowry is John Petragallo. So nice to see you guys over there tonight. And you may be asked to make a few comments here as we go along through the agenda tonight. Again, a reminder for those of you who would like to speak on any item tonight, please do fill out a form and give it to our deputy clerk. If you, this is a time where we ask anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, please come forward. Mr. Anderson, okay? You can give that to me, or Ruth, give that. Andy, why don't you go over here and identify yourself? I know you're from the 4th Ward. You're John Anderson, but you can tell us that.
I am John Anderson from the 4th Ward. And I'd like to question this automatic rave system. The phone rang at 10:30 Friday night, and it sounded like a woman's voice way off at the end of the tunnel. Shots fired, shots fired. Well, what else is new? It's the weekend, and the boys got to get their guns out and shoot it up. Now, this automatic system also woke me up last winter. I was in bed, and the phone's right next to my head. And I answered the phone, and it's snowing out. Remove your car from the city's streets like it's never snowed before. And I know there's hundreds of people that use the street as a parking lot. I don't even use it in the daytime. But the thing that irritated me is it woke me out of a dead sleep. Now, 10 minutes after I got the call Friday, my phone rings. It's my aging sister-in-law, and she got the same call. And she wanted to know what's going on. And I said, well, they're shooting it up over by the college again. So what bothers me is this automatic system, you're going to hard-line wall phones. And there probably isn't one resident out of 20 that's got a wall phone. All these young people got cell phones. So, and then if you get up in that area, the odds would be worse. So I don't think one person in 20 got notified. And I don't know where they got the idea about this, but now, if they're using like 756 and the other digits on the phone that cover the DeKalb area, they also cover areas outside of DeKalb, out of the city, all the way down to Alva, halfway to Malden, and I don't know how far north. But anyway, you're not getting a lot of response. People aren't really finding out about this. And what bothers me most is, one of these days, these people are going to learn how to hit something with these guns. And this is not good news for college. I know, I put two girls through colleges, and I went to the dormitory up in Beloit in the wintertime, and soon as you open the door, you don't have to go very far, there's marijuana reeking all over. Well, it's gotten worse. So things like this don't help the northern at all. But I don't know what you could do. Well, you've got to put maybe more plainclothes, police on the weekend, not in a marked car, and catch these rascals. Because like I'm saying, pretty soon, somebody's going to get hurt. But I guess from now on, in cold weather, when I go to bed, I'll take the phone off the hook because I don't want to be woke up out of a sound sleep, have a hard time going back again. And when I get a phone call like that, I've got, most of my relatives are in their 80s, and I'm wondering, well, who had a stroke? It just frightens you. So I'm not saying that your automatic system would work, but I don't think there's going to be enough people involved receiving the message.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I got that same call. I also had signed up for an email message, so about 15 minutes later, I got an email message. What disturbed me, obviously, and it disturbed a number of folks, is that that first robo-call had no information regarding what was really happening. And so I got one email sent to me at 1:44 in the morning. Now, I was in bed by then, John, but I did see that when I got up in the morning. And that was the first of at least a dozen phone calls or emails. And I know in talking to a few of my fellow aldermen up here, they also received that, primarily from folks who had landlines and were woken up. So I could not find out a lot of information over the weekend. The reason I introduced John Petragallo and our acting city manager, Joellen Charlton, is that I know that they've been working hard today to try to find some answers, answers that you may have and comments that you may have, and answers that we may have. So John and Joellen, if you'd like to tell us what you know about this rave system and why some of us got phone calls the other night, and what you've been able to ascertain as it relates to that scenario.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Anderson, I'll do my best to provide some understanding to what happened over the weekend. I'll also give a few brief comments from what happened over the weekend on Friday night regarding the shooting. It took place on Greenbrier Road, and I could describe it as a very chaotic event. Shortly after the shooting, the department sent out an automated text alert, email alert, Facebook alert, in addition to an automated voice alert. The text, the Facebook, and the email, all those alerts worked as they should. They worked properly. What did not was the voice message, the automated voice message alert. There was a problem with that, and as I stand here tonight, I can't tell you exactly what that was. This morning, we reached out to the company to find out what the issue was. So as of 4 o'clock this afternoon or shortly thereafter, we have not received a reply from the company. What it did is, it did force us to look at ourselves and our processes. So even without knowing what the issue was, we found ways to improve what we do so that something good came out of this before we even have the answer. So I'm hopeful that we will get an answer in short order so we could remedy the issue so it doesn't happen again. I would like to comment that, most importantly, there were no reported injuries. So that is, we're thankful for that. The, next, I'd like to say, the officers, the investigators, telecommunications, they all responded to this incident in an outstanding manner. And as a direct result of this response, we have some very promising leads on the shooting. And they're being worked as we sit here tonight. So we're very hopeful. So I understand the frustration, and I do apologize for that. We will work to find out and identify what the issue was. And once we learn what happened, we'll do our best to remedy it.
John, on the rave system, is that the same system that will give us a call, send us a text, send us an email on a weather warning?
We can basically ask it to do any of those.
Okay.
It could be like a snow emergency or a tornado or circumstances like that. And it could be public safety events that we need to warn the public about. This is a very good system, and although, you know, there was a hiccup in this certain scenario, we're confident that it is in the community's best interest they have a notification system like this.
When I signed up for it, what I liked about it is that Mr. Anderson and I both have landlines. You call them wall phones, okay? But I also have this, and I also do email. So I received both on Friday night, and I appreciate that. It would be great to have this tied into a weather warning system if, in fact, that is something possible.
It is, yes.
And what, one gentleman asked me, he lives over at Oak Crest, he said, "That woke me up. Can you unsubscribe me?" So that's one of the questions I think we're going to want to know. If people just simply do not want to hear about anything, weather, snow, cars, crime, tell us.
You can do that, yes.
And if we're able to do that, you might want to see Mr. Anderson. I take it, you don't want to get calls on anything. Is that right, Andy?
Well, not late at night.
Not late at night, okay. Well, wouldn't it be nice if crime just happened in the middle of the day? But I guess it doesn't. We're going to do our best to try to respond to most folks in the city of DeKalb. And John, I commend you tonight for being honest. I appreciate your candor. And I've said to Joellen when I saw her today, let's try to get some answers to the rave system and what it can do in a positive way for our community, you know? That's what this is all about. So I don't know if you have any comments, Joellen, or not, on that. John, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe you want to stay there because I take it, there may be a comment or two. Bill?
Well, actually, John, you know, as I understand the system, you have to sign up to receive the alerts, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make that very clear to the public, that the city did not sign anybody up. Anybody who has signed up was signed up either on their own accord or somebody did that for them.
There is a caveat to that.
Okay.
The system is also similar to the old reverse 911 system that we had. So everybody is in the system. And depending on how we send out that alert, will dictate who gets grabbed, you know, to receive these notifications.
Okay. So in other words, if you were not signed up for this system, and let's take the incident the other night, whether the message was correct or not. So that worked that night as reverse 911. So everybody with a landline should have gotten a call, is what you're saying, whether they were signed up or not?
Correct.
Okay. That was, I mean, I was confused, and that's why I wanted to make that clear. And so then there's other portions of it, though, you would need to be signed up for to get those alerts.
Yes. And, you know, we didn't take a number of phone calls due to this issue. The majority of the folks that contacted the PD were confused when they heard that message. And the automated voice message that was sent out, it, the template of the message was sent out without the detail.
Uh huh.
And there, in the program, it is supposed to convert that text to speech. So for unknown reason at this time, you know, we don't know what happened with that, the conversion. And we hope to find out and remedy it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Yeah, we would encourage residents, anybody watching tonight, anybody in the audience, to let us know how we can do a better job in the city of DeKalb for something that appears to have really some good merit.
It's a great system, and actually, it's a result, we got a lot of input from the community, and they wanted that, they wanted an alert system that would notify them, especially in these times where we've had an uptick in violent crime. They want it to be notified. So we're, you know, we're somewhat of a work in progress, but I think we'll get it, and the community will appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mayor. Actually, I have a question. Alderman, favor.
So it would be good to find out if it's possible to, as Mr. Anderson said, I don't want to call after, say, 9:00 PM till 6:00 AM. Is that possible with the system? And as we have the reverse 911 that people have been grandfathered in, how is it possible to get out of that, you know, what, so if we could find out and maybe publicize the procedure to unsubscribe?
Sure. I've got Commander Woodruff here. He'll talk to that point.
Commander Woodruff.
Yes, sir. I administer a lot of the backend of the rave system or Alert DeKalb, which is what you're describing with the weather systems. It's all the same things, just different names for it.
Wonderful.
The telecommunications are the ones who actually send out the messages. I'm on the backend. So to answer your question, yes, anyone can opt out of the, of any part of this. If you'd like to opt out of a landline phone, simply give me a call, and we'll get you opted out. If you sign up, as the mayor did, with cellphone or email or anything else like that, you can sign up and put your preferences in. So for example, I'm signed up, but I don't really want to get calls in the middle of the night either. the night either, depending on what it's for. So mine will send me a text message, which will wake me up, and I can see it. It will send me an email, but it will not call my cellphone and wake up my children. So if you sign up that way, you can completely conform it to whatever you want it to be. Now, if there is, the landlines are in there for the reason, and we get those directly from the, from the phone people, the phone company. The reason for that is the reverse 911. So if there's a catastrophic event in town that people need to know about, even if they're not signed up, heaven forbid, there's a tornado, a train problem, flooding, things like that, we can target that area and make sure that we're hitting not only people that have opted into these, but also we can get everybody who just has a landline phone. So that's the reason that that's there. But again, if anyone, and I'll give you my card, if anyone would like to opt out, we're happy to get you out of the system. It's completely a possibility.
Okay. Okay. I think Mr. Anderson would like to opt out, right, John? Right? So you can see him, correct, if you would? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate your help. Now, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any item not listed on our agenda tonight? If not, let's move to the consent agenda. And again, for those of you who are watching, all items on the consent agenda are enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, in which event the item is removed from the consent agenda. I would entertain, I'm going to read the items initially, and then we will have a motion. The consent agenda tonight, approval of city council minutes. A, minutes of the special committee of the whole meeting of September 19, 2017. B, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of September 25, 2017. C, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 25, 2017. Number two, receive and file accounts payable and payroll through October 23, 2017 in the amount of $1,809,524.62. B, receive and file investment and bank balance summary, August 2017. Receive and file. C, year-to-date revenues and expenditures for the general fund and water fund through August 2017. I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Items for separate action. Number one, ordinance 2017-041, amending Chapter 17, administrative hearing procedure by adding Section 17.08, appeal of license denial, and Section 17.09, standards for consideration of licensure. This is the second reading of this ordinance, I understand. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I'm going to allow now City Attorney Dean Frieders to speak on the item.
As discussed at length at the last council meeting, this ordinance would both establish an appeal process in the event a staff-issued license is denied, and also establish a list of factors to be considered in the evaluation of license issuance. We have not received any further public comment or inquiry on it. It has been developed as a response to concerns over past licensure issues and to allow some streamlining of our license process, and also to implement additional due process protections for residents that are applying for a license from the city.
No one has asked for a opportunity to speak on this item from the audience. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Number two tonight, ordinance 2017-042, amending Chapter 51, traffic. Schedule B, through streets, stop intersections and yield intersections. Schedule C, parking prohibited. Schedule E, limited parking. And Schedule Q, speed restrictions as they pertain to the intersection of Third Street and Oak Street. Management analyst Pat DiDiana is going to speak to this item. First of all, I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded now. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight I bring forth several amendments to schedules B, C, E, and Q of Chapter 51 for the intersection of Third and Oak. This intersection here, right, is where the new library is at. Over time, we've been able to observe, and through that, through those observations, we have, we've made several recommendations to the various schedules of Chapter 51. I'll start with Schedule B. With Schedule B, what we'd like, what we recommend is a stop sign on Third Street, northbound to Oak. This ensures pedestrians will be able to cross Oak from Third in a safer manner. For Schedule C, we recommend removing two parking spots on the north side of Oak that are directly in front of the library and in the middle of the intersection. So let's say we are on Third, and we're looking north at Oak. Right in front of the library, there is two parking spots. Those parking spots there, as there's traffic proceeding west on Oak, people open the doors, it kind of cuts off that space. If we remove those spots, we'll increase space, and there'll be a lot more visibility. So that's one of the reasons there. For Schedule E, what we'd like to do is extend the current loading zone on the north side of Oak Street, just east of the library entrance. There's a loading zone there. We'd like to extend it. We'd like to extend it because there is a gap, and within that gap, we have cars parking there. So if we extend the loading zone, people will just load, and once again, that kind of goes along with the previous schedule, opening up that visibility and removing that clutter from that area. Then I'll just quickly move on to Schedule Q. There, we recommend putting a, we recommend, excuse me, lowering the speed limit to 25. We'd place a sign on Fourth, so traffic heading west on Oak would see that. And once again, some of our traffic counts and data doesn't warrant some of the traffic control devices we would like, but so we think that lowering that speed limit will help with that. There's other, there's other, also, there's also other amendments to some of these schedules, and a lot of those are just clarifying some of the previous information that was already in place. We just went ahead and confirmed the measurements and everything. So I know there's a lot there. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Any questions or comments on this? Alderman, Noriko?
I just want to clarify. I drove down Third today, you know, because I was familiar with it, but I haven't looked at it from this perspective before. And because if you're going down Third and you're approaching this one-way street, I automatically, you know, slowed to look. You know, I'm, am I unusual? Believe me, I do have other driving issues, so it surprises me that I was so, that I'm so much more diligent than other drivers. So people literally are coming down Third and just kind of swinging onto Oak?
We have seen that. And so with that being, and we also have to understand, there's also a, on Oak, there's a yield sign. So with that there, we would think that people would slow down.
Well, yeah, if I see people.
But, so you're not unusual that you're doing, you're actually doing the right thing, but we can't count on everyone, so we believe putting the sign there will be to our advantage.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm, it makes sense, but I guess I just needed to understand the scope of the issue. So you're saying, yeah, people are just kind of whizzing around?
I don't want to say whizzing, but there is an opportunity for them to do that if, so I think just having the sign there was our, was the recommendation from our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Alderman, Marquart?
Yeah. If you were going, historically, you're going north on Third Street, you had no yield sign, you had no stop sign, you had to ride away. Traffic on Oak was supposed to yield or stop. Now, when you put in the library and you block that off, it reversed the natural dynamics of how we drive, and it should go this way with an actual stop sign there. And Oak Street continuing to go through as through traffic, but at a slower rate of speed.
You've nailed it, yes.
And so that's the natural way that it should be because Oak got blocked off. But previously, you used to be able to just go straight up Oak all the way up to Pine or Fisk.
Yeah, I, like Kate, thought there was always a stop sign there, because I've done the same thing. You go north, and you want to stop. But the point is, yeah, and you, you know.
Once the library is there, then your natural inclination is to stop, but you didn't have a sign or anything, and so you were in the right of way if you just continued going around there.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman, Finnegan?
Just one more question. Patrick?
Yes.
There has been a handicap parking space on the south side of Oak towards the east end of the funeral home. Will that remain there?
Yes, I believe so. Are you talking about the parking spot that's on the, on the south side closer to the intersection?
I'm talking about on the south side of Oak, really towards the east end of the funeral home.
Yes, that will stay in place.
Okay, because that, all right, that's one of the things, because that's not evident from the drawing we have in front of us.
Yeah, Tim and I have discussed that, and we're going to look into making sure that our exhibits are a little bit more clear on those sort of things.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
This was first reading. Would you ask for a waiver of second reading on this?
Yes.
I will make that motion. We waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Moving right along. Item number three, resolution 2017-122. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Authorizing a packaged liquor license for Sri Sula Shwari DeKalb LLC, doing business as Husky's Discount Liquor, 1030 Arcadia Drive. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Again, City Attorney Dean Frieders, if you'd speak to the item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application for change of ownership of what we currently refer to as Lundin's Liquors at 1030 Arcadia Drive. Sri Sula Shwari DeKalb LLC has applied for a revised packaged liquor license, contemplates the same hours of operation, the same premises layout. Functionally, the only change is to change in ownership and name of the premises from Lundin's to Husky's Discount Liquors. They have completed all of the required pre-application verification requirements of city code. They've successfully completed all aspects of their review. There is a current fire life safety license for the premises, and they have applied for a new license under their name. We have no reason to believe that that would be any issue, given the condition of the property. So this does have a positive recommendation for approval. The ownership is here tonight if you have any questions, but they indicated they do not have any comments unless there are questions.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
No.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, David. I didn't see your hand.
I know in the past, there's been some discussion regarding some of the transit route through the backyard of the property. My question is, can we make, do we have the ability to make the license conditional upon fixing that issue?
That isn't something that we have explored with the applicants at this time, but the approval of the liquor license does include a review of the licensed premises. And to the extent that there are public safety concerns arising out of licensed operation that have an access with their liquor sales, I think that would be a fair question for the council to address. So I believe you'd be referring to passage of people east-west from that property, or from Annie Glidden west through the property into the adjacent residential.
Effectively, Arcadia through to Hillcrest, passing between the buildings. Obviously, it's become a cow path where we've noted several vagrants being out there, several less-than-desirable people hanging out there, especially during the summer, that are creating some public safety concern. And I think that was the issue, I know, that we had discussed previously. Now, with the change in ownership, I think it's something we should probably address and get that worked out to the benefit of the neighborhood, if possible.
All right. From recollection, I believe there is an existing chain link fence that runs east-west for a portion of that distance between the Hillcrest Shopping Center and Annie Glidden. Is that accurate, Alderman Jacobson?
Nothing am I aware.
I think at the property line, at the south property line of Lundin's existing line.
There is one at, correct, at Thirsty, correct. But it doesn't go all the way back to the Hillcrest Shopping Center. So there's a path between the buildings from the Hillcrest Shopping Center all the way to Hillcrest, all the way to Arcadia, effectively, in that area.
So we have looked at that issue in terms of the public safety concerns that arose. It's our understanding that, and I apologize that I can't put this up on the aerial, but immediately to the east of Lundin's Liquor, there's a line of shrubs, and those essentially form the east property line of the premises. So the, this establishment doesn't own the property, that they could continue the fence further east. It continues to the end of their property. But to address your concern, we could discuss with the applicant the idea of extending the fence line north from its current easterly terminus towards Arcadia and try and make a complete fence line there that would help address that concern that you've identified.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So you'd be satisfied, Dave, moving forward on this, given the answer that Dean just gave us as it relates to ownership of that property?
I mean, it certainly benefits the business owner just as much as it does the neighborhood not to have undesirable folks hanging out behind your business location. So I'm certain it's going to be an issue that they now inherit and will have to address at some point. And I just want to make sure that we are on track to deal with that issue before it, the summer months come back around next year, and it's a surprise to a new business owner taking it over, that there could be some issues back there.
Alderman Jacobson, are you requesting to add that as a condition of licensure to the resolution?
No, not at this time.
Any further discussion?
I would like it to be something we address to see if we can get that issue figured out. But I appreciate the fact that they do have other state licensing requirements and want to get open for business and those things, and don't want to delay that process unnecessarily for them.
Appreciate that, Dave. Dean?
So in the interests of addressing your concern, we certainly can explore that with them. In the absence of a requirement in the license, we do not have the ability to compel that obligation. So if it's something the council is interested in, you could include it as a condition of licensure, but give a period of time for them to bring that into effect. So you could approve the license tonight with a condition that would require a complete fence line or a continuation of the fence line in an orderly direction up to the Arcadia right-of-way within a certain period of time. And that would be a mechanism by which we could ensure that your concern would be addressed.
That would be ideal, I guess. Again, I'd like to give them at least a conditional approval, that they can, that it won't delay their time track and those things, with the expectation that they can get it done in maybe 90 or 120 days. And if for some reason they can't, then it comes back to us, and we can.
Are the new owners here?
To waive that.
Yep. Do you want to speak to that? I guess what I hear you say, Alderman Jacobson, I'm saying, to paraphrase you, Dave, is that, you know, we'd like, there's that one area that, and Dave is our alderman in that vicinity, as you probably know, and he's identified this as a potential problem area. Would you like to speak to that? Would you identify yourself, please?
Yes. My name is Bhavin Patel. I'm a prospective buyer for Lundin Liquor and new owner as in Husky's Discount Liquor.
Good.
And good evening to Mayor, as well as the council member. To address the question, there is a fence which is partial, as you mentioned, and if that is the condition, city council wants to put on as an conditional approval for liquor license. We are ready to actually fulfill that condition. I would say at least 120 days. I would say at least 120 days. Reason being is, once we close, we have other priorities as well. So we would like to have at least 120 days timeline to finish that fence up to the appropriate line.
And that wouldn't be too big of a hurdle for you?
No, no. Given the timeframe, sure, yes, we can complete that. And we are, we are willing to complete that in that timeframe.
So Mayor, if I can, given the onset of the winter season and frozen ground and such, the staff recommendation then would be to recommend approval of the resolution with the added condition that a complete fence line be established from the Annie Glidden right-of-way to the Arcadia Drive right-of-way within six months of the date of approval.
Does that, six, that gets them moved?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Would you repeat the, where you just said?
I said, starting at the Annie Glidden right-of-way essentially, so starting at the west end of their property and then it would continue along the south property line and then would turn north and would extend up to Arcadia Drive.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be an L-shaped fence, but it would, so there's a partial fence there. We would just make sure there's a continuous fence line along the south and east boundary of the property.
If, if I'm not mistaken, the fence is, half fence is from Annie Glidden towards, to the property. And if you are saying that a fence needs to be done from, all the way from Annie Glidden to back of the property, but I'm not, I'm not seeing that as in a kind of barrier, what you just mentioned, because that's in the front of the Annie Glidden and the property fence is between the two businesses, which is, one is Lundine, one is Thirsty's Liquor. And in front, it's just the parking lot, so it's not, in my opinion, it's not necessarily. What you mentioned was behind that on Arcadia towards the Hillcrest rather than Annie Glidden towards the Hillcrest.
And the existing fence does run essentially to the right-of-way of Annie Glidden. What I'm suggesting is to address Alderman Jacobson's concern and avoid there being a cut-through, that we would want to make sure your north-south fence actually fully intersects the east-west fence, so there's not a pass-through there.
Got it, yep.
Comfortable with that, David?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Alderman Favor.
So I'm just looking at a satellite view, so I don't, I'm not familiar with the back of the building. Is that a tree line?
Yes.
Behind the building?
It's a line of shrubs. They have been maintained different ways at different times and with the way that they've been maintained, at times they have had pathways through them and at times they have provided habitat for persons to sleep overnight.
So are they on this property or on the, are they on the property line or are they on, on this property? Is this going to be a barrier? Is the shrubs going to be a barrier to building a fence?
The shrubs, the exact location of them has been a point of discussion between the current owners of the establishment and the owners of the residential establishment next door. And this is a topic that we've actively discussed with both of them and with other property owners in the area. I'm confident, given the layout of the premises, that there will be adequate space for a fence inside of the line of the shrubs.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor to okay this with the provision that Dean had outlined on the, on the fence issue. Is that correct? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
And welcome.
Thank you.
Was that, that was on the amendment, though we still have to vote on the resolution as a amendment now, I believe, Mayor.
Okay.
Please.
So we, we have a motion on that effect?
Yes.
We've had that on the floor.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Item number four, Resolution 2017-123, authorizing a temporary and limited parking amnesty program.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I believe Commander Craig Woodruff will address this item. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. We are proposing a resolution for parking amnesty. The background of the situation, between 2013 and 2016, there are approximately 5,000 outstanding parking tickets that have not been paid. So we are, we have devised a holistic system to see about recouping these, these funds. The process follows. As part of the amnesty, we will send out some letters, a media campaign in order to let people know about the amnesty as well. The amnesty will run from November 1st to November 30th only. In that time, anyone who has a $75 parking ticket, instead of paying the $75, they can pay $50. We will then recoup that money. There are some exceptions to that. We will not offer that same amnesty for snow emergency route parking tickets, for handicap zone parking tickets, or individuals with 10 or more parking tickets. So after that time is passed, basically December 1st, we will then, we've been partnering with the Finance Department and with IT, we intend to send our unpaid parking tickets from the same period to a program called iDrop, put on by the Illinois Comptroller's Office. Many municipalities use this to recoup funds. What this does is it takes these fines that have not been paid, researches to find the people who are involved with it, and then takes that out of their Illinois state tax returns. So if someone wants to pay us $50 for the amnesty, great. If they do not, we will ford this downstate and see about taking 75 out of their tax It's really a quite simple program. It's just about all I have about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I know I'm going to turn this over to City Council, but when I looked at this, that item on the agenda myself, I said, whoa, 5,000 parking tickets. So I, so I called Finance today. Ladies and gentlemen, our parking tickets right now, we have outstanding $399,440.
Wow.
That's a lot of money.
A lot of money, yes. And that's, that's beginning to be real, be real money, isn't it? Yeah. Now, if the amnesty, if, if everybody were to take advantage of that $25, we're going to realize $284,815.
Correct.
So this might cost us $115,000.
Correct.
But if we can get a good chunk of that $285 back, more power to us.
But additionally, there's no guarantee that when we send the money to iDrop that they're going to be able to recoup the money.
Oh, I understand.
So if, if we can get people to comply, it takes a lot of work off of our plate and we'll recoup that money quicker and a little bit easier.
Will the iDrop plan, Craig, help us in monitoring this going forward?
Yes.
In a better fashion so that we don't accrue $399,000 worth of unpaid parking tickets?
Absolutely. This, when I discovered this, this was before my administration as well as pretty much everyone's administration.
Oh, yes, I understand.
So the plan moving forward is we're not offering amnesty again for moving forward. So in 2018, we will not offer amnesty for 2017. And at the end of every year, we're basically going to start around December and those unpaid parking tickets from the previous 12 months, December to December, are going to go to iDrop each year. That's our intent. So every year, we will recoup the money around tax time, March, April, who knows when it'll come in, but that is our intent.
Right. Good, thank you. Alderman Jacobson?
I'll let Kate speak because I know what she's going to say.
What's that?
You do?
I do.
No, I am not.
Why, do you, do you have a bunch of parking tickets, David?
No, I do not. I'm not sitting here at the cow, actually.
Yeah, David. Let David go first.
This is the first time we're using iDrop for the police department, correct?
Yes.
This is our first time through. I know after Kate and I attended a session at IML, I had approached Anne Marie with the idea saying, hey, are we using this thing? I know that we had talked about it in its very infant days, the infancy in the state when they were doing it with a previous city manager and a previous finance director. And I think obviously during the regime change that we lost some of that focus. And I certainly appreciate that it's a, it's a program available to us as a city at no cost from the state effectively. We can send our stuff down to them and they act effectively as our collection agent in this case to collect the revenues from any state tax revenue or any other monies owed by the state. It comes to us first before they get their share, so.
Correct.
I, I think it's a wonderful idea, especially when it's no cost to us to start going after that major backlog. And to hear that it was that high is a little alarming, but I have a strong feeling that based on those time schedules, that we will see right around tax time, some pretty significant returns on that and appreciate the fact that the police department, amongst many departments, now is looking at that as an option for us.
Thank you, David. Alderman Noriko.
Can you clarify for me, a $75 parking ticket represents what kind of violation?
Most of our current violations are $25 if you pay them immediately.
Uh-huh.
If you do not pay them, after 10 days, they go up to $75.
Okay.
So we send out late notices at 10 days, 30 days, 60 days, I think even 90 and 120 days. So we send out a whole lot of notes to please pay your parking tickets. So this should not be a surprise to anyone. Now, the snow parking tickets, I can't remember exactly what they are, but they're a completely different ratio. So if we were to try to take $25 off of that, it doesn't, it's not fair. That's why those are excluded. And then, of course, handicap tickets, those are, I believe, $350. But we excluded those for the simple reason that handicap tickets are more severe.
Yeah. And so the ticket, if you park by a yellow, no parking striped, that, that starts out as 25 and then goes up?
Yes, yes. I believe nearly every parking, fire hydrant, yellow curb, no parking zone, nearly everything is uniform. It's almost all $25.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Finukin?
Craig, I noticed that you're planning on starting with parking tickets issued beginning 2013. I would imagine there's a fair number prior to that, too, that we've just written off at this point, or?
I have not written them off. 2013 to 2016 is when we had our parking tickets digitized into a database. So they are in a condition that we can work with them. I have to give a great deal of credit to our management analyst, Emily Tips. She has done a ton of work on this and she's made sense of it so that we can actually go after them. The 2012, so I believe 2007 tickets are a lot more problematic. They're not in a database per se, or if they are, they're in scattered databases. 2012 is when our ordinance changed for parking, so some of those citations were $3, some were 25. So it's a little bit more jumbled. So our intent is after this.
That's why you picked the 2013, just because it was more easily done.
It's a bird in the hand. After this, we intend to look at 2012 and see if that's feasible to go after those as well, and then we'll work backwards.
All right, thank you.
I am so proud as your mayor to have Alderman Jacobson and Alderman Noriko combine on this. Is this, this is, this calls for a photo op.
Don't go too far. We never.
Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Marquart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your help on this. Okay, moving right along. Item number five, Resolution 2017-124, authorizing the Finance Department to provide payment to transit, on-transit services provided by the Voluntary Action Center, VAC, of DeKalb County from July 1, 2017 through September 30, 2017 via the City General Fund in lieu of delayed Downstate Operating Assistance Program grant funding to ensure uninterrupted public transit service until grant funds are received in an amount not to exceed $733,897. Motion.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. I'd like to have our Public Works Director, Tim Holderman, to address this. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Staff is requesting the City Council authorize the Finance Department to provide the Voluntary Action Center, or VAC, a line of credit from the General Fund for the transit services that they've already provided for the city between July 1st and September 30th of 2017 in an amount not to exceed $733,897. As you know, VAC is our contractor, our transit services provider. What you may not know is that they are much more than a contractor to the city. They actually raise $400,000 a year, which goes towards our local match for the grants that we receive to run our transit system. VAC's been operating without reimbursement payments from the city since July 1st. The city normally pays VAC with the Downstate Operating Assistance Program funds, or DOP funds, on a monthly basis. However, delays in the state of Illinois have delayed the normal funding timeline for fiscal year 2018. The transit budget is a pass-through budget, as you know. We receive federal funding for our capital, that's for our buses, and we receive state funding from iDOT for our operational expenses. Typically, we receive a, an agreement from the state for the Downstate Operating Assistance Program in the May-June timeframe. Remember, we're dealing with a state fiscal year. That gives us time to write the memo, bring it to council, seeking your authorization. Typically, then, we have the mayor sign it, send it back to the state, the state executes it, and then we have an agreement. And then we go to the comptroller, that paperwork is sent to the comptroller, and we give them quarterly estimates in terms of what we think the cost is going to be. Those estimates are typically in advance, or we receive the money from the state in advance. And then as VAC invoices us on a monthly basis, we pay them that monthly amount. So the system works well unless we have an interruption, which we've had this year. This year, we did not receive the agreement from iDOT until September. And the reason for that is that Illinois, the state, is working on the Government Accountability and Transparency Act, or GADA. And they're trying to understand how to incorporate that legislation into the different contracts that are being initiated throughout the state. And this was the delay that occurred. So we didn't get the agreement until September, and then we were here, I think on September 30th, actually asking approval. We, we talked about it at that time. Kate made a comment, Alderman, Alderman Noriko made a comment, Alderman Finukin also made a comment about the delay and that many of the state programs were being delayed. So we did receive that contract agreement. We have executed it, sent it back, and we have the state signed agreement as well. So as of October 13th, Friday, we had an executed agreement. Now, our two quarters, our first and second quarter, so that'll take us through December 31st, those payment requests are already in the comptroller's office and we're waiting for those checks to be signed. So that's on our side. On VAC's side, they've been operating since July 1st without any payment. And so they've been going for about three and a half months now. They do have a line of credit with a local bank because this stuff does happen from time to time in their history, this has happened before, where they've had to use their line of credit with a local bank in order to continue to pay their vendors, their staffing, and so on, and continue their operation. In this particular instance, it has gone beyond their line of credit. And so what we're asking City Council to do is to consider a line of credit for VAC in the amount not to exceed $733,897, I'm sorry, $733,897, which is the amount of the three invoices between July, August, and September. of the three invoices between July, August, and September. And those, that line of credit would be executed through an agreement that the city attorney and finance director would create. I would like to say in closing that we believe the risk to the city in terms of financial exposure here is pretty small. We've got all the paperwork in place, this has happened before, it's delayed before, and they always come through. We see no reason to anticipate anything different. The impact of not giving this line of credit to VAC is significant. They, not being able to pay their vendors, are going to have to make some hard decisions about staff and about the ability to provide the transit services. Remember that members of our community depend on VAC for rides to medical facilities, rides for their shopping, and other things, and rides to work. And so the community is really depending on this. And so I think as we look at this and see the small risk and the significant impact that it's a risk that staff is recommending that city council take and approve this recommendation. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can jump in on that last point briefly. We do recognize the risk here is that if the funding from the state didn't come through, it's unlikely that VAC would be able to come up with this funding independently. The reason that we assess the risk as low, we have a definable cause as to why this is delayed, the state's implementation of this new act requirement, and that has been implemented across a number of different contractual relationships with the state, if we've seen on other projects that have come to council of late. We've been advised that, by the state directly, that our contract with the state for these funds has been approved by the state. We've been advised that the funding, both at the federal and state level, has been appropriated. We've been advised that the invoices that have been submitted have been approved and have been submitted to the comptroller for payment. So those would all be ordinarily the critical junctures where something could get hung up, our contract not be approved, the funds not be budgeted or appropriated, the individual invoices be rejected for some reason. The indication we have from the state is that each one of those has successfully passed, and we have confirmed that from the state in writing, so that there's no question or doubt about the due diligence we've done on this. At this point, it appears, and the state has confirmed, that the only thing outstanding is now actually waiting for a payment to be issued by the comptroller back to the city. So that's the factual basis behind our risk assessment here.
Thank you. Appreciate those, those comments, and I appreciate your check-in on this because it is important. Okay, Alderman Fanouk.
Well, you know, I think I can safely say how important VAC is a community, not just the medical rides that you mentioned, but the pair of transit, the fixed route service, and also the routes out to Kishawaki College. So it's very important that we go ahead and keep these running. Having served on the DSAT's board for quite some time, I'm also certain that the state will come through with this money, and the holdup has really been with the implementation of this Transparency Act. I attended a conference, a meeting session on it at IML, and they were very clear about they were having a lot of problems in getting it implemented and getting things set up. So I definitely want to speak in favor of go-ahead-ing and fronting them the money.
Alderman Norrico.
There's no doubt in my mind that VAC is one of, you know, the two stars in, you know, DeKalb and DeKalb County. And so my question is not directed towards negating their value or putting up opposition to this, but more by way of exploring or asking about another option. I know when, you know, you've come forward about DSATs and have talked about DSATs, there are other partner communities that are part of that. Have any of them been approached about kind of sharing the pain in this difficult time? Or, or is it because, or is it because we are the fiscal agent that it all kind of stops with us? That even though there are these other partners?
But, Bill.
The federal and state governments, you know, just see us?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Alderman Norrico, the way the DSAT's is set up, the city of DeKalb's a designated fiscal agent. None of the other agencies, while they all contribute to the local match, they're not the fiscal agent. So that money will be sent not to VAC from the state, but it will come to the city of DeKalb.
Okay, as the fiscal agent, okay.
As the fiscal agent. And that's why it's, you know, for us to step up and take care of it, knowing that we will get the money back from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for explaining that. Alderman Jacobson.
Prelimarily, this is why we have a savings account in the city of DeKalb for issues like this, and I know there have been other Aldermen in the past that have advocating wiping that fund out and spending down all that money. Unfortunately, when you operate on a zero margin, when there's an emergency, you don't have an emergency fund. So I think it's important to remind ourselves of that when an issue like this comes up. In terms of when, when do we believe that we're going to see this money back? In a 30-day times period, 45, 60?
I, I don't have history, so I would ask Brian Dixon to talk about history. That is, the time between?
The appropriation of the payout.
Yeah, the contract and first payments.
Historically, we've, last year, we, was the very first year they implemented GADA. And it was around this time last year that they came through with money. It was a little, probably like the beginning of October. So we got it just in time for, the VAC had been using up all their, their fundings. Historically, it's always been October or November when we receive the funds. One thing that is different this year, and I'm hoping this helps, is there was a resolution brought forth last year during the election time that said that public transit funds that were allocated towards transportation had to go towards transportation. So in the past, IDOT has taken those funds, put it in the General Fund for other things. Now it's dedicated to transit, so it, it has to go to transit. So I'm hoping that, I would think with all of those factors, my estimate is within the next month. I can't say for certain, but I think we will see it within the next month.
And what is your current limit of your operating credit limit?
Um.
Yeah, I hear Brian.
Okay.
Your line of credit.
So VAC has their own line of credit with a local bank, and it's about two and a half months' worth of operating expenses. So they're, they're at about three and a half months now.
I mean, my question at that point becomes, do they need the full three months at this point? If we can continue to fund them to operate for another month in advance to limit our potential for losses, and being that they have a credit limit, and being that we expect to see it in 30 days, I struggle to see why we have to go back three months' worth. Obviously, they're still operating today, they're outrunning the buses. I know it's difficult, but to take the full exposure is a hurdle for me, and I guess the question I'd have to finance is, do we even have that amount liquid to be able to let? I mean, most of our money is invested in short-term and long-term investments. I would imagine most of that rainy day fund or savings account, whatever we want to call that portion, the 25% of budget, do we even have the ability to come up with that kind of cash?
So it's kind of, two responses to that. One, we wouldn't be issuing a check tomorrow for the full amount. It would be finance, and it was in the report that finance will work with VAC to issue kind of funding as needed. So we'll try to, essentially to limit the city's risk here, give them as much as they need to operate till the next time we decide to kind of reevaluate where they're standing within this line of credit. So the potential is to go through the whole amount because grant funding hasn't come. But the hope is, you know, we're only doing this for one week or two weeks, and the comptroller finally releases the funding. The part on our funding is we look at where our cash is and what our bills are going to, and we can move money in and out. And we do that frequently, we try to keep most of our money in as high interest as possible and move it when we need the cash, and that's exactly what we do. We look to see what we're going to pay there, and then we'd adjust and move cash here.
And to your concern, Alderman Jacobson, that's the reason this was structured or proposed to be structured as a line of credit in lieu of coming in and suggesting dispersing a lump sum to them, or doing a resolution authorizing a one-time payment. In talking with the Public Works Director and Finance Director, we felt this was the most responsible way to approach it, that we have the ability to work up to that full number, but that it would be in individual disbursements on essentially a line of credit. And as payments come in, we can credit back against that and get it paid down.
Alderman Verbic.
I clearly understand the impact of this vote. Are we guaranteed from the comptroller to return this amount of money to our general fund?
So we've given you all the information that we have, which is that the contract is approved, the funding has been appropriated, and our invoices have been approved and submitted for payment.
But there's no guarantee. An IOU to the state of Illinois, there's no guarantee.
I don't have a way of providing any greater assurance than what we've been advised.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouk?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Norrico?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Brian.
Can we just request an update that when those funds are, if they do come through, that we get some notification that that's been rectified?
We can certainly do that. We can work with council on updates on disbursements as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, item number six, Resolution 2017-125, authorizing a Phase Two Engineering Services Agreement with WBK Engineering LLC for improvements to the intersection at Annie Glidden Road and Fairview Drive in an amount not to exceed $162,000. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Public Works Director, Tim Holdman, once again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Staff is seeking city council authorization for Phase Two Engineering on the intersection improvements to Annie Glidden Road and Fairview Drive. The engineer for the Phase One is WBK, and we would recommend that they be allowed to continue as our engineer on this project into Phase Two. Back in January, we went through a qualifications-based selection process in which we solicited requests for proposals from three firms, and WBK was selected as the favorable firm. I will note that that was prior to hiring WBK as our city engineer. City council authorized a Phase One engineering agreement for not to exceed $115,000. And we also, at that time, authorized $275,000 in MFT funds. We knew that we would need Phase Two engineering, and so we talked about Phase Two as an option as a part of that omnibus approval. Now, that allowed us, if we wanted to, to continue with WBK without going back out for a request for proposals. So that was the advantage of identifying that as an option in that original agreement. However, we did not authorize them to proceed on Phase Two. It was just the option of being able to hire them for Phase Two. At this time, we would like to proceed with a not-to-exceed agreement of $162,000 to execute the engineering for Phase Two. A little history on this project. It dates back to the improvements on Annie Glidden, which I'm sure many of you can remember, where we were awarded $5.6 million, and we didn't spend all that money. And come 2016, that money became available again, and we, we requested it, and we were granted $799,000. This project has a cost estimate of about $1 million, so that'll take 80 percent, it's an 80/20 match, so about 80% of it will be paid for by the federal grant and 20% by our local MFT funds. Phase Two was looking at the preliminary design report, doing some of the initial review of what had been done in 2000, and updating and revising the engineering drawings, and meeting with IDOT, holding public meetings here. And those meetings have gone very well. There was a part of this project that was potentially problematic, and that was the construction. We were looking at possibly going into construction at 2018, but more likely going to 2019. Well, early in the year, we received a call from the tollway telling us that they had plans to construct, do improvements to their 88 Annie Glidden intersection, and that they were going to do that in 2018. So the engineers really put a lot of effort in getting to the point where we could move construction into 2018, so that we wouldn't have two construction seasons in which that intersection was under construction. So kudos to WBK, they've made it happen, and they're to the point now where they need to start moving on appraisals and easements. That is a specific task associated with Phase Two. So in order to continue to move them forward on this project for the purpose of being able to go to construction in the latter stages of construction year 2018, because the toll road will do their work in the early summer, and then we will do our work in the late summer and into the fall. But it will be one construction event to the public. We also are realizing about $40,000 to $50,000 in savings in doing that coordination with the tollway. They have a lot of road to repair, and they don't like little things getting in their way. So when we start talking about who wants to do this and who wants to do that, they're a lot of times receptive to, we'll just do it as a part of our project. And so WBK has been working with the tollway, and they've realized about $50,000 in savings in that. So with all that said, I've come before you tonight with a strong recommendation to authorize this agreement with WBK for not to exceed amount of $162,000. Be happy to take any questions.
Alderman Fanouk.
Tim, just maybe for the public, why don't you give a brief idea of the scope of the project, what we hope to accomplish?
Okay, so that intersection is in pretty bad shape in terms of just the condition of the asphalt. There are some other drainage issues to the northeast, or to the northwest. That farm lot up there really floods a lot, and the drainage underneath Annie Glidden is not very good. So those are two things, the pavement condition of the intersection and the drainage, enhancing the drainage underneath Annie Glidden. And in terms of added capacity, we're going to see that the three lanes that are currently heading south on Annie Glidden are going to be made into five, okay? So you'll have a left turn only as you're going south onto Fairview. Similarly, as you come along Fairview headed west towards the intersection, now it's two lanes, and that will be expanded to three lanes. Additionally, as you're coming north off of the tollway, there are five lanes now, three going south and two headed north. That will be expanded to three. So you have a left turn only there, a right turn, and then a through lane there. So several enhancements in terms of the capacity, and also the condition of the pavement and the drainage.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Alderman, favor.
Is there going to be, is part of the improvements going to be to straighten out that intersection, because you come off the tollway, I forget, I think you come off the tollway and you're kind of heading not quite north, you're heading a little north, northeast, and as soon as you cross over Fairview, you immediately shoot straight north. And so it creates a lot of, it's got to be a lot of confusion. I drive it almost every day, so I see, like I'm coming through the, merging to the left lane, and people coming at me think that I'm turning left at the intersection, so they feel free to pull out in front. But yeah, there's quite an angle change right at the intersection of Fairview where Annie Glidden is at one angle and the exit is at a different angle.
Yes.
Is there any plan to straighten that out?
Yes. The angles will not be changed, but there will be a greater width.
Okay.
So that the impact of that angle will be less, if that makes sense.
Well, and as you're stating with, I guess with dedicated left turn lanes, and I think the width will provide some more visibility too.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Mark Hart?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobsen?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Okay, there is no new or unfinished business that I know of this evening. Let's move to reports, communications, asking each of our council members to see if they have anything to report. Alderman Jacobs.
I did want to mention, only because we don't have another meeting before then, on November 10th at 5:00 PM is the 2017 NIU Relay for Life event. They are holding it in concert with the NIU men's basketball home opener at the event, which I think will be a fun synergy to see how it plays out. If you are interested in joining a team or supporting a team, I'm certain you can go to Google and search NIU Relay for Life, and you can get all the details for the event, the teams that are participating, and even sign up a team if you'd like to participate.
Great. Thank you, David. Alderman Fanoukian.
I think I'll reiterate that the community meeting for the Annie Glidden North Task Force is 11:02 at 6 o'clock at Westminster, and that the task force will be the following week on the 7th at 3:30 PM in the DeKalb Community Outreach Building on North Annie Glidden. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Markwart.
No report.
Alderman Fagan.
Back in August, we had a neighborhood meeting for Fairview residents and their concerns. There was a handful of concerns. Since that time, one of them was with the trucks that went up and down the road that didn't feel that the posting was adequate and pedestrian crossing, and I just wanted to thank Commander Lakus was there at the meeting, Patrick, Tim Holdman, and I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay. And since that time, Tim reached out to me, showed me some signage and some ideas they came through. They came through within budget, and when you drive through there, coming in off the tollway, going off Fourth Street, going down Fairview, it's really made a big impact. I've got a few reached-out emails saying that they haven't seen a truck. So we're working at it, and I want to thank the city. You guys did a great job.
Thank you, Pat. Anything else?
That's it.
Alderman Noriko?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
Well, I can say that the Sixth Ward is worried. They are worried about the behavior that's terrorizing our city. And I have received more calls and messages about these behaviors than any other matter in our city. And we had some years ago a session at the Egyptian Theater about gang awareness. And I guess from what I'm hearing from the Sixth Ward, now this is residents, business owners, students, they're willing to invest in stepping up our game. This means advanced police measures, technology, you name it. I would like to have a discussion about prioritizing funds in the next fiscal year about advancing our game.
Thank you, Mike. Alderman Favor.
No report.
I have two items I'd like to report on tonight. As most of us know, Illinois was the number four state out of 11 that Mazda Toyota was looking at. Illinois had two sites that were considered for this huge plant, which would have been located, if we had been successful, on 1,000 acres south of the tollway, just off of Fourth The three final estates were in the southeast. Illinois was fourth. And according to DeKalb County Economic Development Director Paul Borick, Illinois fared fairly well because of a number of items. And DeKalb specifically scored very high because of our transportation, because of our location to Chicago, because of our proximity to the airport, because of what we had here, and because of Northern Illinois University and Kishawaki College. And I just want to give a shout-out to our staff and to the staff at Northern Illinois University for working, and I'm not kidding here, countless numbers over weekends during the week to put together a package that would make DeKalb very attractive. I'm sure the folks in Rochelle did the same thing. And while we are disappointed that a project like that is not landing in DeKalb, let me tell you this. In my opinion, we are in a better position in terms of having our facts, our figures, our contacts together better than we ever have been. And as a result, when that next project comes along, and it probably will not be the size of Toyota Mazda, but believe me, we're going to work hard with our economic development and our community development department, and I just wanted to let everyone know that. So I appreciate the collaboration between the county, the city, and the university and Kishawaki College. The final point I'd like to make is on something that was the subject of a number of emails and Facebook queries last weekend. This is a letter I received from Todd Stofa, who is with the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation. Mayor Smith and city council members, on behalf of the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation, I would like to express my sincere apologies for the mishap that had led to the email and Facebook questions that were raised this past week regarding our 501(c)(3) status. We were unaware of the issue until it was brought to our attention. We have been advised by our accountant that we were one of nearly 22,000 small groups that were inadvertently and mistakenly dropped by the IRS due to a paperwork issue. We've already met with our accountant, have submitted all necessary documentation to be reinstated as a valid 501(c)(3) organization. We, as volunteer members of the DeKalb Firefighters Historical Foundation, continually strive to educate and represent the city of DeKalb and its residents to the highest standards. I wanted to clarify this issue and make sure that each of you, as community leaders, were made aware of this issue. As always, if you're interested or have any questions, please feel free to contact me directly. Todd Stofa, Captain, DeKalb Fire Department. So I appreciate his clarification on that particular glitch. Deputy City Clerk Ruth Scott, do you have anything to report?
No, sir. No report.
How about City Attorney Dean Frieders?
No report, excuse me.
And Acting City Manager Joellen Charlton.
Just a couple of development updates. Today's staff and a couple of elected officials attended the grand opening ceremony for the New Chili's restaurant on Sycamore Road. It's a fantastic place. It looks amazing inside. They've done a really good job. The space is about 5,800 square feet, and they can seat just over 190 people, so I encourage everybody to go out and give it a try. One of the things, I know the mayor talked to some of the management people there and asked how their experience was coming through the city, and I'm happy to report that from beginning to end, so talking to our economic development people and getting through the planning and zoning process, as well as the building code process, was all a very positive experience for them. So that's something we like to hear feedback on. Also, a little update on Casey's. They're working fast and furious to meet their November deadline and are doing very well. We saw them installing landscape materials even today. One of the things that is still outstanding is there is some work in Peace Road that's required to install a new median on between the two lanes or the two-directional traffic, and this will prevent northbound left-turn lanes into the project just north of the intersection and hopefully prevent some rear-end traffic. That is work that they expect to start shortly, so that's one of the last major things you'll see impacting the traffic in that situation. Otherwise, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joellen. John Petragallo?
No report.
Molly Talkington, our Finance Director.
No report.
Eric Kix, our Fire Chief.
No report.
Tim Holdman, our Public Works Director.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to report that Illinois 23 has all lanes paved. The pavement matching the top of the manhole cover, so we don't have that issue. What is left to do is the side streets, the connections. So as you cross 23, you still have to be careful.
Yes.
Because there is a significant.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, bump. So please, drive carefully with regard to that. Also, we're making good progress on the bike path. We have about three-quarters of it paved now, and we endured, made it through a heavy rain last weekend without significant detriment. We are continuing to advance that project. We're starting to work on the shoulder work now, but it looks like we'll be able to make our, you know, mid-November deadline for being done, and then restoration with some grand openings next spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Our IT Director, Mark Thorson.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items. The first is, we've released an Office 365 bid for Microsoft products. As you may well know, the licensing model is, they're, manufacturers are influencing their clients to look at cloud-based products and offerings. So in order for staff to do our due diligence, we've put out a bid to see what's available and what that's going to be, and we expect to have a recommendation to council at the November 13th council meeting. And I also wanted to give an update on the Enterprise Resource Planning project that we're in the middle of. And we have just finished one of our three demonstrations from a software company called BSNA Software. And this week, we are looking at a demonstration for Tyler Munis, which is another strong competitor. And then next week, we have one for a company called Creel Consulting, who is offering an Oracle product that we'll also be looking at. Our goal is to have a recommendation to council on the November 27th meeting. And finally, I wanted to point out that October is National Cyber Security Awareness Month. And in addition to that, obviously, there's been a lot of events happening, so I think it's just important to reinforce good computing habits, internet habits. And I went out and found on the Department of Homeland Security's website, they have a number of good resources, but one has just some five tips that everyone can use to be safer online. And one is enabling stronger authentication. And what that means is, if a product you're using offers a second factor authentication, what that means, if you go to a bank's website, they may offer you the ability to send you a text with a one-time code that you would have to enter in, that would be a form of a second authentication. If products you're using have that capability, we recommend that you set those up and use them. Second is, make sure your passwords are long and strong. The longer your password is, it makes it more difficult for attackers to be able to guess that password and break in. Third is, keep an updated machine. Make sure that if you have Windows, you're using Windows Updates, you have those enabled and you're updating regularly. Make sure you have a paid-for antivirus system and that you keep that up to date as well. I think the most important thing is, when they say, "When in doubt, throw it out." When you receive an email and you're not, it looks suspicious in any way, shape, or form, make sure you're not clicking on links. I also recommend that you contact the person personally if it's something, especially if it's something you're not expecting. Contact the person personally and ask if that was intended for you, regardless of what the from address says, because that can be spoofed in a number of ways. And finally, share with care is essentially your online social media presence. Look at your privacy settings in your Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, any other social media accounts you're using. Look at those privacy settings. Take some time and go through those and set what you're comfortable with, because that is another way that attackers can find ways to get into systems and attack, basically. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everyone, for your reports. I'd ask for a motion to now hold an executive session.
So moved.
You gotta read the thing.
Yes, I will. Recession for executive session, approval to hold an executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2 C5. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second discussion. Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobsen?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes?
We will now move to executive session. Thank you, everyone.